All right, Joe Becker.
Here.
Andy Bertram here, Peter Wissenbach.
Here.
Dan Kader.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Dean.
Here.
Russ Roloff.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
Could I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Motion, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Could I receive a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the October 25th, 2017 regular board meeting?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposing sign, motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the bills payable?
Motion, second.
That's an uncomfortable pause there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you, motion carries. We'll move on to good news, Tim, are you taking the lead?
Yeah, um, the marching band and we had invited them after they won the state championship to come and present in October. And they've come, and so we talked to them about coming and presenting here and giving them their recognition in November. But as we all know with the heat of some things, maybe with the bond and the levy and everything else going on. But we may invite them back again for that recognition. But again, kudos to the marching band, the season that they had and then culminating it with the state championship. We're definitely very proud of that back, so. And I know that some of you were maybe in attendance at the event, so.
A long day.
Yeah. Well, and I think you should share a little bit about that. So it wasn't just that the marching band received the state championship for the Class A band, but they.
Well, there was four classes.
Yeah.
And they had to, they won their Class A, but then they qualified to do the evening session, which went. They were going for the top, the top band in the state, they were one of ten.
Yeah, across class.
Yeah, across all classes.
All classes, yeah.
And they got ten, but you know, hey, they made the top ten, so. In our, in our small band compared to Rosemont and, you know, Eastview, two, two fifty, two hundred eighty kids, you know, they do very well.
Yeah, and there was other competitions throughout the year where they were going up against Class A, or Class Double A, Class Triple A, uh, schools. And in, in other, was it, was it Marshall?
Sioux Falls.
Sioux Falls, I think, they, they beat a number of them, just straight up, so.
And I think every single time they won against their class, in every competition they've won this year. Except Sioux Falls where they went against bigger schools, so they really had a great show and, you know.
And they, and they won all the caption awards, so the best wins, the best drum major, the best, I mean, they just swept everything, so it was, it was awesome.
Very good year.
Yeah.
Thank you for explaining that a little bit. We'll move to the superintendent report, our first item is Jen Michael, World's Greatest Workforce, the new report, World's Best. Oh, is that?
World's Best Number One, whatever.
We're just waiting now for.
Thanks for the warm up.
Yep. Be good. Yep, just trying. So I've been here now two years, this is my third year talking to you about World's Best Workforce. Like I joked, Tim likes to add syllables, if you call it the World's Greatest Workforce, same concept though, World's Best Workforce. So when we look at World's Best Workforce, just as a reminder, it's the state's initiative to make sure that schools are preparing students to be what they want to be considered the world's best workforce. And the state implores districts to write goals and work on implementing goals in five areas. And the areas are, all students are ready for kindergarten, that all of our students are reading well by the end of third grade, that we're working to close the achievement gap, that we are improving graduation rates, and we are preparing students for college and career. So know that right now, I'm reporting on the sixteen seventeen school year, we have worked to set goals for this school year, but because much of our data comes in at the end of the year, or as the state fair time with MCA results, they look to, you know, fall, early winter to be, to be able to share the world's best workforce data. So before I get to our goals, I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we consider as we create those goals. And you'll see that there's a lot more bullets under kindergarten readiness, because we've been doing much more work related to kindergarten readiness, and I'll talk more about that later. But when we think about creating a goal for kindergarten readiness, we think about what does it mean to be ready for kindergarten? The statute says that we have two things, the student is five years old by September first, and they have gone through preschool screening, that's it. Anyone who meets those criteria, they walk through the door and we say welcome and we'll have you. When we look at creating a kindergarten readiness goal, it's not about check the box, you're ready to come in through the door, but really helping to prepare kids to be ready for the academic rigors of kindergarten. And sometimes people think about rigors of kindergarten, there are. We have high expectations of those kiddos as they work through the door, so some things that we can do before they enter our schools. We might think about literacy, or mathematics, or that social emotional readiness. And we have to take a look at the gamut and figure out how can we write a goal that meets the state criteria and good criteria of writing goals that is specific, it's measurable, it's attainable, it's relevant, and it's time bound. So we have to have data associated with it. So some of the conversations we've had there, we really prefer to have a goal that's about social emotional readiness, that's hard to measure. So it's part of our plan, but just not in the documentation of the, the actual goal. Third grade reading, we think about what assessments can we use to measure progress? Achievement gap, what data is meaningful so that we can inform the day-to-day instruction? We have in the past used MMR data, which is pretty convoluted numbers on a chart that MDE has that really doesn't impact the day-to-day instruction that we do. And we want to make sure that the goals help us do the work that we do on a daily basis. Graduation rates, I have no additional information there because it's about graduation rates and improving graduation rates. And then college and career readiness, really getting to that idea of what does it mean to be ready for college and career? And how the heck do we measure that? So that's, those are the big ideas that we considered. So now I'm going to take you to, as you know, I like to create infographics. So I put together an infographic and it is live on our website right now, I just made it live. So these again are those five areas right here. And I'm going to go through our goals and then I'll go through how we did, but we'll stop in between and just talk about what questions you might have. So in kindergarten, our readiness goal is working toward all students being ready for the academic challenges of kindergarten. We will increase the percentage of students who meet district criteria of the identification of thirteen uppercase letters, thirteen lowercase letters, and eight letter sounds. Our reading well by third grade goal is looking at being proficient in reading according to the MCAs and shifting from fifty-two percent of all of our third graders to fifty-seven percent of our third graders who meet or exceed those state expectations. When we look to closing the achievement gap, this goal looks different than it has in the past this year. We, like I said before, we hung our hat on MMR data before and we've shifted, I think, to a better measure for us. So we're looking at growth and according to the MCAs. And so we're, we want our students to increase from sixty-nine percent of the kids to seventy-five percent of the kids, of all of them making medium or high growth on all of their MCA tests. So we just put it all in one bucket and we turn it around and look at how they grew from one year to the next. Our graduation rates, we want to increase from ninety-six to ninety-seven percent of students graduating or meeting the graduation requirements. And then college and career readiness, and that's the handout that I shared with you there. We, uh, two years ago with Vision 2025, created a list of indicators. So just this year, at the end of last year, we asked our seniors to complete a survey, asking them about their perception of their K-12 journey and really targeting in on those indicators that you have in front of you. So before we get to how did we do, what questions do you have just about those goals?
Could you explain one more time the closing the achievement gap goal?
Yeah, that's the one I figured we have questions about. So what the state does is they put together a document that says if a kiddo earns this score on the MCA, so let's say a third grader, they earn a three fifty, which is right at that proficient. They look at all of the data across the state as they enter into fourth grade and say, the typical score for students who earned a three fifty would be a four forty-eight, let's say. I don't know that that's exact, but I think it's pretty darn close. And so that would be making medium growth if they go from third grade to fourth grade, looking at what the average score is. So if a student outperforms that typical pattern, then they would be in the high growth bucket. And so that really helps us look at not just one group of kids. It helps us look at our low achieving, our medium achieving, and our high achieving goals because we want all kids to grow at least a year within a year's timeframe. And I think one of the benefits of looking at growth, particularly for kiddos who aren't quite at proficient yet, is we can see that they're making progress toward that if they're making high growth. And really that group of kids needs to make high growth so that we can zoom in on that proficiency. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, what other questions might you have?
So typically, on that same subject, making average growth, what percent of kids don't make average growth? Do actually drop, what percent of kids do that?
So when we look at this, we have about seventy-five percent or seventy percent of our kids last year who made that medium or high growth, so we were looking at about thirty percent who didn't. And we want to keep going upwards. So we were looking at, we want three quarters of our kids in, you know, making meaningful progress. Clearly, we want a hundred percent of our kids to make medium or high growth, but we're being realistic in taking incremental steps toward that. Any other questions?
Since the kids aren't in the system yet, really formally until kindergarten, so how do you achieve that goal when you don't have them in house?
So are you talking about the kindergarten readiness goal?
Yep.
That's an awesome question, and I'm going to ask that we hold on to that because I'll talk about that and then if you continue to have questions, I'd like to dig deeper into that. And I'm really excited to be able to share some of the things we're working on there. Okay, so let's zoom to how are we doing? So in kindergarten readiness, we saw that we went from fifty-two percent to like fifty-three percent. So we did, we saw an increase, not a great increase, and so that's why we got one star and not two or three stars. The stars are totally subjective.
Did you, did you wake up the stars?
I made up the stars, it's just for that visual impact. So as you're looking, you can go, oh, look, we're a one star, we're a null star, or woo-hoo, three stars. The reading well by third grade, you, you'll see that this is our greatest area of need. Are definitely a sense of urgency around literacy instruction at our elementary level. We saw a decline from fifty-seven percent of our kids to fifty-two percent of our kids meeting proficiency. Our achievement gap, we set that goal at seventy-five percent of our kids having medium or high growth, and we surpassed that, went beyond that seventy-five percent. There's been some significant work, particularly at the middle school, to look at growth and what can we do on a day-to-day basis to measure the work that kids are doing. Graduation rates, super excited about graduation rates, we're at ninety-seven point seven percent graduation rate. And the really amazing part about that, when we look at graduation, we can look at a four-year, a five-year, or a six-year graduation. And I look at our sixth year, and the reason that we go out to six years is because there's a bucket of kiddos who, because they're on an IEP, have access to school beyond their eighteen, you know, eighteenth birthday. And we want to celebrate that continued plan. And so by that sixth year, we have more kids who have met those graduation requirements. So we're at ninety-seven point seven, I think, when I last looked at the data, that's two kids that we can't account for. And it might be that they moved systems and their data was lost in translation. Because if a kiddo leaves our district intending to go to another district, but their paperwork doesn't get there or the students don't start, they've left us, but they don't belong anywhere else, so it comes back to us. So we need to do a little investigation on that, two kids, but really not a, not something that is a crisis for us. And then college and career readiness, the survey that we sent out, and so you have two documents, one that are the indicators and then that half sheet is, these are the questions we asked our seniors as they were nearing graduation. We had like ninety-five percent of our kids responding positively to those statements. So I would say, when it comes to college and career readiness, we're on the right path. We may need to consider a different goal that's going to inform us better than the goal that we currently have. So now I'm going to dig in a little bit. And the cool thing about our infographic is that we can click on just about anything and that hyperlinks to more information, so yay for the internet. And I'll start with kindergarten readiness because that's, the great question that you asked was, if we only have a certain percentage of our kiddos at Tilden, how do we impact that? And you'll see in our three-year trend, we haven't made any significant movements. So what we have done is we've set up quarterly meetings between Tilden pre-K staff and our kindergarten teachers, and that's been happening for a couple of years. Our Tilden preschool has done a better job of targeting instruction around letter recognition, knowing that that's a goal for us. Last year, our community ed hosted a one-night professional development for daycare providers, whether that's our non-public, our center-based, or our home daycare. And last year, a small group of district leaders went to a, a conference, a training about bridging the gap from pre-K to three, trying to have a logical, meaningful transition. And then because of that, and knowing that the work that we do impacts such a small number of kiddos, we have initiated a kindergarten readiness leadership team. And that group has met one time, and it's pretty awesome in that we have a representative who speaks on behalf of our non-public schools in the district. We have one who speaks on behalf of the center-based programs. And then we have one woman who comes in and speaks on behalf of the home daycares. And so together, that team is putting into place a plan to gather community support around kindergarten readiness. Another thing that we've done, which is this year, not that, that last year, so I'm not technically supposed to talk about that because we're, we're reporting on last year, but I'm super excited. So we have a plan in place to offer monthly professional development now for our home daycare, center-based, and, um, non-public pre-Ks. And the first session is set for, I think, next week. And we have invited three kindergarten teachers to come in and be a panel. And we're going to do a quick video of a day in the life of a kindergartner. And then our providers are going to be able to ask our kindergarten teachers questions with the goal not of repeating kindergarten in preschool, but here's what we do in K, and here's what you can do in preschool to lay the foundation for success in K. And so that partnership is blooming and it's, it's really exciting, there's some energy around it. And, um, excuse me, community and ed is really on board with getting more information out there, so that's really exciting. What questions do you have now about kindergarten readiness?
I see, I see a lot of things out there about through the school, through preschools, through daycares, et cetera. Is there any, is there any focus on just getting the information directly to the parent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, for sure. I think the tricky part for us is how we reach out to parents individually. And we've talked about things like connecting with our medical practitioners and being able to share information that way because we know that parents take their kids for well checkups. So those are in the works as ideas, and that might be next year's report or the year after that, but definitely an area that we're interested in growing. What else do you have for me?
Have any idea how many, what percentage of children attend the, the Tilden pre-kindergarten?
Yes, but I don't have that number right off the top of my head, I was just looking at a data chart. I would, uh, I think we're looking at under a third of our incoming kindergartners go to Tilden. And then HCDC is probably the next largest programming provider that, that enters into here other than home daycare or family, friend, and neighbor, which, you know, we, we titled that when we ask parents to report what kind of programming do kiddos do. We put that in the family, friend, and neighbor bucket, if you will, and that's the large majority. I can tell you that when we slice and dice the data of the kindergarten assessment, and that's when kindergartners come in August, they meet with their kindergarten teacher, and they go through letters and sounds and colors and shapes and those sorts of things. And really, the purpose is twofold, to collect some data, but also to begin building that relationship between the kiddo and the teacher. We know that students who participate in some sort of preschool programming, whether that's a formalized program or with family, friend, and neighbor, do far better on their data than kiddos who parents report no preschool programming whatsoever. So I think that you are right that we need to get that information to parents, not to say you need to do preschool, but if you're choosing to do not, not to do preschool, here's some things you can do to help your students be ready for the rigors of kindergarten. Good, all right, so now we'll move to read well by third grade. In, on this page I've shared with you, this is an image that can be found on the state website, which is public. It's called the Minnesota School Report Card. And we see here the totality of our third grade in the district and our trend line. We're the green line, the state's the blue line, so we're outperforming the state slightly. We need to do better than slightly outperform the state. The hiccup that we see in our Hastings Public Schools is we saw some increases happening. And while we see an increase from last year to this year. We're seeing that in two of our schools, we're declining in scores, and in one of our schools, we're increasing in scores. And so as a district, some of the things that we have done is we've continued our readers writers workshop model, trying to shift away from we do what it says in the resource. Instead, we use the resource to help us implement this model that's good for kids. We continue to have discussion and make decisions about both daily classroom reading and writing expectations. We're working as a K-12 ELA committee to refine our literacy scope and sequence. And through that, we're, we have reintroduced the English Language Arts Curriculum Review Cycle. This year, so we're intending to see growth in next year's data. This year, our three elementary principals, Mary Cash and I, have gone through a literacy institute, which has given us some tools to do more specific classroom walkthroughs so that we are looking at and collecting trend data about the work that's being done in our literacy block, in whole group, in small group, in independent practice. And using that trend data, we can inform a professional development plan. Definitely, we have some work to do in our K-1, 2 as far as our foundational skills, so our phonics and our phonemic awareness. And that is a work in progress as well. So we're working on things, and there's definitely, our teachers are feeling this, I don't know, a sense of guilt about what's happening. And we don't want that, we just want everybody to be doing very best that they can. And that is happening in many of our classrooms, they're doing the best that they know how to do, and we just need to help them know differently and better. So no blame, just let's try and dig in and figure out what's going on and, and keep pushing to do better. What questions do you have about third grade reading?
Well, I know that you were in the process of digging deep and figuring out what's going on, but do you have any really indication of, you know, without, I'm not blaming anyone, I mean, is it that, oh, we've been really focusing on math, let's say? Or, or do you have any sort of indication of what may be something that you need to look at further?
For sure, we need to look at that foundational skills. Our, when we implemented our new resource with our being a writer and making meaning, we didn't purchase, and therefore we don't have consistency in those phonics, phonemic awareness, and all those basic skills that kindergartners, first graders, and second graders work on in order to be good readers. So we have pockets of really good practice out there, but it's not consistent between classrooms because we don't have a guiding resource, if you will. So we're definitely looking into that piece. And then I think the counterpart to that is spending time, and we have begun over the past year or so, really looking at what do the standards ask our students to do? And what kind of work should we be seeing that shows they're proficient on this particular standard? And we're looking at that progression because the way that the standards are written in ELA, in English Language Arts, is you have a heading, and then it tells you it looks like this in kindergarten, this in first grade, this in second grade, when you organize it that way. State doesn't organize it that way, they, they go kindergarten here, all of your standards, and first grade here, all of their standards. So I've organized it differently so they can watch one standard progress through all of the grades and know, hey, they already knew this when they come to me, so now I can deepen it and not begin again. That typically happens later than third grade, but those are some of the discoveries that our teachers are making when the standards are reformatted in a way that allow them to see those things and make aha moments. What other questions might you have?
So the state grew their percent proficient by about two point nine, we grew ours by about four point nine, or some two point six, four point nine. So we grew our proficiency more so than the state, but yet we're still not happy with it overall. Is there a rhyme or reason to the fact that Minnesota ranks number one or two in the nation in ACT scores? And yet we're seeing third graders. So I guess the question is, as a board member, or as a superintendent, or as the director of teaching and learning, is there panic when we see statistics that on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, we're scoring at sixty-four point five percent proficiency, but yet at the same time we have graduation rates of ninety-seven point seven? And we rank, I don't know what we rank, I think we rank number one in the nation in ACT.
Pretty close to that, yep, yep. Not in panic mode, I certainly wouldn't be in panic mode. But when we look, when we dig into specific schools and we see some decline happening, we don't want that. We want to make sure that we continue to progress. I would say, as we continue to watch those scores and, you know, we're just continuing to go upward, then we're okay. And that is really important for us to watch that as we go into fourth grade and fifth grade and sixth grade, to see, does that trend continue? Is third grade an anomaly because it's the first time they do a standardized test? Maybe, maybe, you know, maybe that's happening for us. But that's, when we look at data, that's what we have to do is wonder, you know, what do you notice, what do you wonder about? And then what can we do some action research around? All right, so then, achievement gap, and we'll get there. So the state does provide this nifty chart of students who, and I, this is the reading chart, not, they don't combine reading and math, so this gives you an idea, but doesn't give you all of the data, so.
Jen, can I start, can I ask one last question on the third, on the third grade reading?
Yeah.
At what point, obviously it's a progression type thing, and all, just from my experience, so two kids same age first grade, one's much better than the other.
Sure.
Uh, so that one requires a lot more work to try to get them on task. But at what point would the teachers reach out and try to maybe work with the parents to keep them on track and homework, or give them some extra, I guess, homework? But I mean, to work with the parents, like, you know, we're a little bit behind and.
Sure.
You know, because as a parent. You know, because as a parent, I would have no idea unless I had the other one to compare it to and say, holy cow, you know, let's pick it up. So, we work with them that way, but I mean, if I'm a first time parent...
Yep.
Or, you know, I don't really have any idea how the other kids are doing, I would have no idea, I'd have nothing to compare it to. But so, is there any point where we, you know, teachers sit back and say, okay, well, maybe we need to start working on a plan to get them going at home so they can bring that up?
My understanding, and I will definitely check in on this, when we have students whose data suggests that there's a need for intervention, we connect with TIDAL. And that TIDAL and home might have some better communication about here are some specific things that you can do to shore up those particular skills. So, when we look at, and our TIDAL folks are amazing in the way that they collect data about a kiddo, and we've now added some, another reading intervention person at the elementary, who pulls kids in small groups to work on things like, I mean, in kindergarten, those kiddos who come in who don't know all of their letters and sounds, they pull them in a small group and they whip through it. In most cases, they have a readiness for it, they just haven't had the experience yet. And so, we do that really quickly and then get them back on track. And so, we have, with TIDAL and this new intervention program, we have the ability to have some long-term programming because TIDAL requires that you have much more data collection and access. We can get kids in and out. And so, our new staff member has passed practice working with kindergarteners, so she's really focused in on those K kids and has put them through what she likes to call the kindergarten boot camp. So, they do letters, they do sounds, they do rhyming words that gets them ready for reading, and then they're likely not going to need intervention. So, I think that the work comes, when we target those for intervention, then that's when parents might be included into here are some things that you can work on. Beyond that, read with your kids. You know, we want, that's the message that should come home to every parent is just have them sit in your lap and read books together. That's the best thing you can do. Good? Okay, so, achievement gap. The state is limited in the data that it can share. It can only share reading or math and not together. So, this is reading, but I combine reading and math when I put the data in our goals. So, we have a chunk of low, a much bigger chunk of high and, you know, a significant number of kids who have medium growth. So, some of the things that we did over the past year, we've really helped our teachers to understand how growth data is calculated so that they can consider that. At the elementary schools, we have what I need time, and so they're really trying to target group instruction based on readiness. So, if a group of kids needs intervention, then we'll pull those together and work on them. If a group of kiddos who are high-end readers, if you will, they might do a book club during that time to continue to challenge them and further their growth and just continuous practice there. The math curriculum review that I think I've shared with you, we've really focused on the instructional practices. And so, I believe that the growth that we've seen over the course of the past year has really been about a shift in the way we do business in math class. It's, I'm hopeful that one of the board workshops, that you'll visit a school where they'll do some, a presentation about what's happening in math, because that would be really fun for you to see, to put that on your list of things we might want to look at. And then, as we have gone through curriculum review and we have a number of content areas now, either initiating curriculum review or continuing, we continue to look at how do we increase discourse, so get kids talking about the content in class because that helps them be better and better understanding state standards. And that's just part of our general practice now as we do curriculum review, and that goes out now to colleagues who don't sit on the committee, but the work that happens on a day-to-day basis. So, we're working on this. What questions do you have?
How often do we run into the situation where you have a student that makes high growth and then they slow down and they come back to, you know, so they go high growth, high growth? And then, do we get nicked if they, if they have low growth, which is still, they're still achieving, very, very, you know, they're probably above their performance standard, but they have low growth?
Right. So, interestingly, that question was asked particularly at the middle school who's been focusing on this. And if you dig down into their data, their sixth grade team really is outstanding as far as the practices that they're embedding to make growth with kids. They've looked at kids who did incredibly well in fifth grade, they go to sixth grade and they still do incredibly well. So, given the right environment, even if they continue to grow, they can get that high growth. And I would say, for those students who are topping out, and maybe it's medium growth and we're still celebrating that, because we want to see them make a year's growth in a year's time, at least a year's growth. Great question. All right, so I'm shifting on to graduation rates. And this blob of gray means our graduates, which is really quite awesome. And this is the six-year rate, so I was wrong about my two. So, we have 97.7% graduated, but we have four kids who are continuing, which is still a positive. And when you get into numbers that high, it takes away from that percentage of graduated kids. Not that that's a bad thing and we certainly don't want to dwell on that. And then we have four kids that we've lost track of. I don't necessarily like the dropped out language because it's possible that they dropped out, but it's possible that they've gone to a different school system and they just didn't begin. So, that's something that's, that can be a work in progress for us, just making sure that we follow up with kids. So, I, I think that much of the success here is attributed to the work that our guidance team does at the high school. They really make sure that they're checking in with students and helping them on their path to make sure that they meet the requirements for graduation. And then, when we see that a kiddo needs a different environment, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that ALC is an opportunity for them, because that might be what they need in order to take the right steps to graduate. So, kudos to them for the work that they do, well, and our high school teachers too. I mean, clearly they're doing good work too. Any questions about this one? It's pretty easy. Okay, final one, college and career readiness. So, you have, this is a much longer page because I have detailed out the data from the responses on the survey. So, we ask kids if they agree, somewhat agree or disagree, and I put somewhat agree and agree in the positive category because there's only three and we don't, we can't have yet. So, I guess what I'd like to focus on here, this, so these were those three choices. And then we got to question six and asked kids to think on a Likert scale, from one being strongly disagree to five being strongly agree. Rate the ways that you've had, or the opportunities you've had to use these skills in your school career. And we have, everything except time management lives in the fours, and I think that's really amazing that kids can reflect and say, here's how my experience has helped me practice these particular strategies, that in Hastings, we feel our valuable skills in strategies. So, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that, that we organize the survey in a way that gives us more meaningful data. And I think one of the ways that we can do that is having students report on, I had practiced with this in elementary, middle and high school, so they're not thinking about their very last year. Because when we think about college and career readiness, and particularly some of these soft skills, they transcend high school. You know, there are things that we can work on for their entire career. And then, really, we need to gather a group of people to say, how else can we reorganize this to make sure that this data is meaningful to us so that we can inform that what we do in our classrooms? What questions do you have here?
Of all of them up there, I'm surprised that time management, given how many activities our students are involved in, I'm surprised that time management is the one that isn't a four.
Yeah, I wonder, you know, again, it's a wonderment, but I wonder if because they're so busy, it's hard to say yes to this and no to this and prioritizing, and if they're just doing it, but we haven't had the opportunity to help them process through, hey, look at what you're doing with your time and how many things you're accomplishing. You really are managing your time.
Do we know once they graduate if they're going into a two-year program or a four-year program?
There is a fairly new data system called SLEDs. It's the statewide longitudinal educational data system, I think. And you can track, they work with higher ed to report, here are the kids who begin, who continue after the first year and after the second year. So, we can track that, but it's not every school in higher ed, you know, we don't have much for out-of-state data there, but we do have access to Hastings kids and what is reported from higher ed of the schools that's associated with that. It's a fairly new data system that as this district, we haven't really delved into, but that might be something that, you know, as we continue, our, some of our high school staff may be interested in learning more about.
I'm pretty sure too that Mike Johnson, over time, has done his own, how many are going into the army, how many are going into workforce vocational.
Yep.
He doesn't track it then, if it kept going to report you, but I know that he has that initial, yeah.
Yep, that self-report as they're graduating, here's what my plans are. Any other questions about this one? So then I'm going to come back here and just share some big picture things that we continue to do to help us work toward our goals. So, last year, I started with our very first leadership retreat, where I asked principals to invite a small group of teachers from their school to help write the goals and the action plans that their school would work on over the course of the year. We begin that day with an overview of World's Best Workforce and ask that school goals align with those World's Best Workforce areas in a way that's appropriate and meaningful for the staff in that building. And then, their job is to go back and report out to their whole school and invite people to write their PLC, their professional learning community, and their IDDP, their individual growth and development goals around those building goals. So, hopefully, we're having all of the arrows line up that helps our system work better. So, we had our very first one two years ago and we continue to have one this year. And they're really successful because it's a general district overview and the bulk of the time is school teams sitting down to talk about what do we need to work on this year, with the people who have the on-the-ground work to do. So, this year, we are going to do two mid-year check-ins. Last year, we did one in January, and when we came back in January, there were some teams that went, oh yeah, we wrote some goals, didn't we? And we don't want that to happen. So, we met in November this year and it was a great refresher, and then we're going to come back again in March to check in and see what progress is being made. And again, it's a time for their team to reflect on what progress have we made, what can we celebrate, or what have we kind of let go that we need to put some energy toward? So, that's been helpful. We are on this journey to self-directed learning in our professional learning communities, meaning we want teachers to think about what is it that I need to learn and practice in order to be better at my job and not have somebody tell them, here's what you need to work on. So, we're looking for more investment and excitement around that growth opportunity. And then, as I have continued to add parent groups, and we have a few going this year, the World's Best Workforce is part of what we learn about. So, just last night, we had our curriculum parent advisory and we took time to look through the World's Best Workforce, and they had lots of great questions and ideas for improvement, particularly on that college and career readiness goal, and lots of ideas around action steps in that kindergarten readiness. So, we take those ideas and then implement them into our plan with the people who are working on the plans. So, it's not just this thing that we filed for MDE, we're hoping this becomes the fabric of the work that we do in order to continuously improve. What questions are still lingering? That's right.
This was really, this was really good. Thank you.
Thank you, no questions. I mean, your presentation was really good and I really liked how the ease on our website and how if a parent wants to dig into more, they can click and get there, and I really appreciate that.
Good, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
We have a couple more items.
Well, number one, I know this is being televised, so thank you, community, thank you, thank you, thank you for the non-inletive vote that took place on November 7th, your continued support of the community, the continued support of our children now and into the next decade, the board is really appreciative of that. And again, I think it all started with the transparency of the community facility task force and seeking more input and the school was listening to that input. So, I know, I wanted to start off with that and I know with the board, it was that same, same feeling. We were extremely, extremely pleased with the vote of confidence that came from the taxpaying residents last Tuesday, really a very good feeling. This, for you as board members and for those people watching, okay, you know, what's next? What happens now? Well, it's to now meet with, Kim's been asking me that too, that she's trying to get everything lined up and all the codes and the draw plans and the bond and the investments. So, we've already been meeting with those individuals behind the scenes on Monday, the facility, some members from the facility task force, Russ and Joe and I will be meeting with Scott McQueen and will be, for the first time, you know, listening and talking about what are the next steps and why are those phases? And so, our task force will start talking about that. So, that's, that's really, you know, where we're at. And then, I think most people in the community understand, a lot of these projects take now a lot of communication, a lot of design work, more communication, more design work, they have bid process, so it's just not something that, that happens overnight, but definitely we'll start looking at that list and after meeting with Scott, we'll have more to report back to the community.
Right, and I think it's important for people to understand, correct me if I'm wrong too, but the, but the bond and the expenditure of those bond dollars is a three-year period?
Yes.
So, it's, again, we very much appreciate the support of the community, but this is going to be phased out over a few years and we want to make sure that we get competitive bids and that we have a special design behind the works so that it's efficient and effectively accomplished.
Yes, exactly. There's, there's no way we'd be able to do all the projects in year one, there'd be just too many projects going on because you need to manage those projects too and make sure that they're being done to the level and with the integrity that you want the projects done to. So, definitely we'll, we'll be phasing those in. Without a doubt, the Hastings Middle School HVAC is a huge, huge project because a lot of it's indoor work and we'll be planning for that as well. But again, we're, we're just one week away. We've already had talked to Springsteen about when do we want to sell the bonds because the timing of interest rates, the timing of that, when do you need the money? And so, how soon do you want to get it set up? How soon do you want it in Kim's labs, which she's starting to, to set it up and code it appropriately? Those discussions have had play, taken place. And Monday now will be the first on the side with Scott McQueen. We spent some time previous to the vote, but you definitely didn't want to spend a lot of time with Scott McQueen at all, and you didn't know for sure whether or not the bond was going to approve. So, that's where we're at right now is really next Monday, members of the facility committee and myself. I know that Dan is on the facility committee and he has other commitments. And I think at the end of this meeting, we'll just talk about whether or not another board member wants to join us. I don't think we'll hurt Dan's feelings.
No.
I want him to say it in public that I won't hurt his feelings and not hear about it later, but we can talk about that at the end of the meeting. So, that's a quick update.
Got to check my calendar and make sure that nothing's changed from here.
Then an update on ties for the board. Last Friday, I was at a meeting up at ties, I think there were 35 to 40 superintendents present. I guess I would state it as being, it's not a very good situation right now. And I'm very fearful of how the spiral downward is going to start going quite quickly for a business, a business model that is no longer working. You know, the CEO of... And, you know, the CEO of Ties was quite honest with all of us, because we are the owners of it. And he said that the Ties branding name right now has a bad image, and that if you're a vendor, you're not really running the Ties door right now to, to work with them because you're thinking that it's headed a different direction. Same as with the schools who are the owners. And I'm one of those schools that called for a meeting with Dan Cader and said, "Hey, if I believe that this is gonna be phasing out, Dan, can you enlighten me and tell me about internet and how I could get it elsewhere?" Well, you can bet that a lot of the other schools are starting to do that same thing. You know, how can we go to, you know, different products? And of the forty-some schools that are there, they're all at different places. Hastings, for example, we use five products from Ties. I wouldn't say that, other than the internet, any one of them would be a very difficult for transition for us to move away six months from now, nine months from now. Two of the products we were looking to move away from anyway. Some of the districts, and some of them are large districts, we're talking in Okeahinap and largest school district, Osseo, top five. They've got the business software, HR, and payroll with Ties. Well, guess what? That's a huge transition, and it's always a scary one. When you move a student information system and you mess up on a kid being tardy or absent, and you mark it wrong, or the system gets it wrong, we don't get people, you know, knocking at our door. But when you mess up payroll and somebody doesn't get their check, those are big issues. Well, so those schools are sitting there saying a little bit, "Whoa, I know we're spiraling down, but how fast can we move away?" Twelve schools have already submitted their letter to leave this June. So if that, if those twelve schools do leave, how much faster is it gonna spiral down for the rest of us remaining? And even if we vote to dissolve, how much are we all gonna end at the, owe at the end of this? Because everybody's starting to go elsewhere with their products. So Ties is starting to lose their, their revenue stream. Definitely, the feel in the room was that Ties needs to dissolve. That was, we didn't take a straw pull vote, but you could tell the feeling of, hey, this is starting to get pretty, pretty serious here. But then it's how do you phase that out? There were some feelings of those twelve schools shouldn't be able to leave because we're all in this together. And some of those schools said, "Wait a minute, we got one product from Ties. I put my letter in. I should stay just so you don't lose as much money, and you don't lose as much money, and you don't lose as much money." So the other part is, it's very difficult for them to give superintendents information that we can give to you as board members. I said, "I need some level of assumptions that I can bring back to my board that if we stay in it for the next two years with everybody, what could we potentially owe two years from now?" Oh, it's very difficult. What would the building sell for? How many of those twelve schools are going to leave? How many people are gonna go to different student information or special ed or business between now and then? And I said, "They still have to come up with this." I said, "My opinion is this, you still need to come up with assumptions, just like I have to come up with assumptions, and Kim has to come up with assumptions for you as a board, saying, 'Well, we think we'll have this many students next year. We think we'll get this much from special ed aid. We think our health insurance.'" We do those assumptions. And I said, "Right here in your document, you're saying that any school staying for the next two years, they're gonna need more money to cash flow. Well, can you tell me roughly, you know, how much?" So right now, I just compare it to a business that was working fine, and they were going along fine. The leader of that business four to five years ago probably wasn't giving real accurate information to the forty-some member school districts on where they were headed financially. She gets removed, and comes a new CEO saying, "Hey, this is your reality here." And then, where we're at with technology, you can just get it from other, other vendors. You can get it from other places. And so also, poof, the business model is imploding. Then somebody asked the question, "Okay, if we dissolve, as we currently are structured, will there be a new target, so to speak, for lack of a recent thing, you know? Will there be a new business model that will still be here?" And I thought he answered it very well, but that's really not his job. His job right now as CEO is to guide us through, are we gonna stay together as a team? Are we gonna dissolve? And he believes that once he guides us through that, then somebody else should come in. And maybe Ties will be internet service. Maybe there'll be a depot where you can buy computers and laptops through them. Maybe there'll be the Watts transportation system, and maybe they'll provide professional training to school districts, and they'll hold their Ties conference where they make a lot of money. Maybe that's what'll be a year from now or two years from now. So I don't have any numbers that I can give you as board members, because again, as we've been waiting and we've been wanting those numbers, we're just not getting them from Ties. There's gonna be a vote taken in January, and every member school district has the superintendent who can come and vote, and you can bring one person with you in the bylaw house. Could be some guy on the street. It doesn't have to be a board member, it doesn't have to be a director. You can just bring somebody else who will vote with you. The majority of the members that show up will determine if you're gonna dissolve or not. So you can bet every district's gonna show up in, in January, but other superintendents echo what I said. Can you please give us a little bit more information in December so we can come back to our boards? Because they have hired a broker, for those of you who know the Ties buildings, in a great location right off of Larpinter and Snelling. They've hired a broker to see what they can sell for. That definitely will help to offset some of our liabilities.
Have they stopped their software development?
Yes.
Good. Because that, to me, I know that they had gone from, if I remember correctly, directionally, about a hundred and fifty FTEs down, I think they're about half of that right now. In my opinion, they should be focusing on how can we help our member districts transition? How can we make that transition easier to another vendor? How can I do my data mapping so that it's not big and scary for things like student information systems, payroll, you know, those types of? How can I? Because I guarantee you, they've never looked at it from that direction. They've always looked at it as, "Oh, you're leaving us? We're going to, you know, we're probably not gonna give you a whole lot of help in moving away from our business model."
Well, I, I think this was the first meeting where I heard the recognition that we're in trouble. I'd say up until this meeting, it was still, "We're gonna do some development with cybersecurity. We're still gonna do some development with student information systems, which is synergy." But they're really struggling, even as they're maybe developing that, they're struggling to give the support at the schools who have stayed with them on that. Picture this, some of those large schools, the same time we transitioned to infinite campus, so they shut down their student information system, and they told us that about a year, year and a half ago. So all districts, then, were looking somewhere to go. About twenty of the schools stayed with Synergy, the new product they brought in. But they have struggled because they downsized from a hundred and fifty to seventy-five to give those schools the support. So now of those twenty schools, I'd say about fifteen aren't very happy with that product. And now being told at the same time that HR, payroll, finance, you're having to go another direction. You've got two major transitions. So again, they said that they were trying to give us some of those assumptions in December. They'd probably call for another superintendent meeting, not a voting meeting, but an informational meeting in December. And in January, will be the decision to, you know, dissolve or try to hang in it for two years to see where it goes. I can tell you right now, I'm not interested in hanging in. My recommendation will be to the board. I was gonna recommend to put our letter in to leave this June or July, and I waited until they had the meeting in August, which they pushed to September. So I definitely was, am going to recommend that we, we leave Ties when we're only really one product. But yeah, it's for forty-some public schools, it's gonna be a situation that's not good. And I said that, I do not believe that, you're in a collaborative and a cooperative, but people come and go out of collaboratives and cooperatives, just like school conferences. You, you have a commitment, but then things change for you, and you need to change with it. And for those twelve schools who made that decision, that it was time to change, I, I would not have hard feelings towards them if they left. Now they, they made a decision of what was best for them. One of the schools doesn't have, they have zero products from Ties. Zero. But they're paying a membership fee of thirty-one thousand dollars a year, and now they're paying a cash flow of about twenty-five thousand. If I were them, I'd be gone. So I'll, I'll keep you updated on it, but unfortunately, I think it's going to continue to spiral down.
Is there a date we have to get the letter in by?
Their executive committee had made this, these rules about a year and a half ago, that it was by July 1st, a year previous to you leaving.
Okay.
Well, I know you've started this process already, I'm aware of that, but between now and January, maybe if you could continue to kind of evaluate other E-rate internet service providers and kind of do kind of a cost out, I think it'll make your actions in January all be easier.
Yeah, you had shared that with me when we met the last time.
Mm-hmm.
And for those of you watching at home, Dan knows a lot about internet, because he's Dakota County Technology Director, so.
I don't know, I wouldn't say I know a lot. I, I do, I know enough to be very comfortable with how you're talking about. I think that at least you have to take a strong look at what's going to be in the Ties group.
Dan, do you guys get E-rate on your internet?
Dakota County had applied to be actually an E-rate provider for, and was denied that, as we probably should have been. It's really not our business, but.
But I mean, do you receive E-rate dollars against your internet? Do you guys actually apply for E-rate?
With the exception of a library, the county does not receive E-rate dollars. So, library system had received E-rate until, at least until recently. So now there's, you know, and government IT is always changing, you know, there's Dakota County and the cities within, including Hastings here, they're forming a, or it might be premature to say that, now they're at least looking at forming a Joan Powers organization. And when that organization gets up and running, which would be summer of 2018, I do know that they are at least talking right now, I'm anticipating that they'll apply to be an E-rate provider as well.
Because we're just starting the E-rate process now for the eighteen, nineteen school year, so you get sixty percent reimbursed off any of that internet.
Yeah. I do know that, you know, Tim and, and I had just bounced this off of one provider, you know, in this area, just to kind of do a quick comparison, and that's the first one I could think up, and they're an E-rate provider. So I don't think it's very, I don't think it's exceedingly difficult to find reasonable E-rate providers.
Just so we get them to bid on our E-rate.
No, and again, the Ties model was great for schools, as schools are coming through the technological ages and the digital learning, and now, good news for us too, there's a lot more vendors out there that we can choose from with a lot of great products, and that choice has definitely hurt Ties.
I do think that, kind of online, I'll scout the same here earlier, think of the Ties membership, and maybe kind of just refocus in the Ties organization. I mean, that group is still very strong and together, and so maybe they could look, Ties could be basically kind of a wholesale organization, collective, I mean, as a Joan Powers group, really. And so they could probably do a lot for their membership by keep, keeping it together, but they would have to refocus, and yeah, up until, well.
Just recently.
Yeah.
Part of it too, and I get it, when two or three of your school districts have fifty thousand students between the three of them, and they want this product or this service, then you try to keep them, you know, happy, but when all the rest of the members don't want it, now you're spending time and energy on the products for those three, and you're losing sight of where your bread is buttered, so to speak.
And if, if, just looking hypothetically to January, if the vote is made and there is some directive to say, "Okay, we're going to dissolve," well, that doesn't mean you're dissolving like that. And that's good, because that will provide a window for people to transition, but the CEO needs to be aware that when that vote is made, the resources, your subject matter experts that are still remaining at Ties are going to jump.
Yeah, he talked, he talked about all the different irons in the fire that are a problem, and he mentioned that, that already, you're starting to lose good people, and jobs still need to be done, and tasks still need to be completed, but they, rightly so, are gonna start looking for other positions immediately.
Or they're gonna have to pay a higher retention.
They might have to incentivize them to stay to the end, your key people, because of that seventy-five, not all of those seven, and no offense to anyone, but of those seventy-five, not all of them are probably absolute must-have key people if you're going to be.
And he talked about the cost actually even probably increasing even more because of trying to retain those people at the same time when you're losing revenue, because people are going to different products already. So I will, again, if I find something out in December, I'll be going to that meeting, but then there's gonna be a vote in January.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the action item portion of our agenda. Our first action is a motion to approve a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general and special elections. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote in.
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram, yes. Peter Busenbach.
Yes.
Dan Cader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
Our second action item is a motion to approve the second meeting of Policy 510. I'm sorry.
I'm in the Dropbox.
I'm looking at the Dropbox.
I'm in the Dropbox, and you can't be looking at it.
All right, I'll hit the refresh button. The second item, our action, is a motion to approve authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Could I get a motion in a second?
A motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
What other election duties will you be engaged in?
Actually, it's Andy. He's typically the clerk, so I don't know where his bed, but.
I'll do my duty diligently. Okay.
All right, this is also a roll call vote.
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram, yes. Peter Busenbach.
Yes.
Dan Cader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
Motion carries. Our third action item is a motion to approve a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special election, seeking authorization to issue school building bonds and to revoke an existing referendum revenue authorization and replace with the new authorization. Could I get a motion in a second?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, this too is a roll call vote.
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram, yes. Peter Busenbach.
Yes.
Dan Cader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
All right, that motion also is approved. Our fourth action item- All right. That motion also is approved. Our fourth action item for tonight is a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 510 related to student travel.
And the only, the only change that we had from our last meeting, and I reviewed this with administrators too, is basically under Section D, frequent flyer miles, hotel points, et cetera, we added to it. So I'm definitely, at this point, recommending that the board move forward with this policy and as all policies, as we roll through it and implement it, if there's additional changes that need to be made, we'll go that direction.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'll just say that I know that new policy, you know, in kind of a complex point, I'm sure there's going to be changes, you know. But I believe this is a good start.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our fifth action item of the evening is a motion to eliminate the position description and classification for the following, which is adult basic education teaching assistant grade eight. Could I get a motion in a second?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I'll just share that early this year, as Kerry Gore was trying to downsize the program to bring it into the black, or a little bit less in the red, these two positions were transitioned away from. So as we look to move away from the adult basic, as far as us running the program, as a school board, we need to eliminate the position so that we don't have to report to the state on the position that we no longer have. So that's why the motion in the second, and we're looking for the approval.
I do know that this, I don't want to get too much into the actual people here. But this is not, this action does nothing other than eliminate the position. Doesn't eliminate the employee.
There's no, there's no employees in these.
These are the teachers. It's a superfluous classification.
Yeah. This is part of the budget, but it was to not fill the positions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't fill these positions for this year.
This is part of the budget process.
Kind of cleaning up.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. That was actually a good clarification. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our sixth action item is a motion to approve revisions to the 2017-2018 non-contract rate of pay schedule. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Just simply that we have some positions that fall in between master agreements, and we approve these every year at the board level.
I'm going to approve this again, not much. We had some additions on it, so I'm better than ready.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our seventh action item is a motion to approve limited number of leaves, small number of leaves. Could I get a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our last and eighth action item of the evening is a motion to accept the resignation of a single individual. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I've always wanted to, like, collectively, like, vote when these resignations sound.
Let's not make it this long.
No, we won't do. We won't.
This blessing will come.
Yeah.
Further her career. Any further discussion? Thank you. That was not helpful. Did not clarify the issue.
Expected that to mean it would be less helpful.
I can hardly wait.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We do have a few items of other business, including the 2018 board calendar review.
Just reminding you as board members to look at the calendar, review it, because when we get to January, we'll be making some decisions on meetings, dates, you know, other things. So please take the time to look at that as we do the other January meeting.
And I'll just expose my ignorance at this point. Is there a draft 2018 board calendar on the website right now?
In the Dropbox.
In the Dropbox. I'm going to turn this on, turn it back on, and then re-enter the current time zone. I just got the agenda to refresh. I'm going to go back to the rest of it. Oh, okay. I will look again. I will look at it too.
See, Joe has it.
Well, then I better get it, because I just can't bear to be technologically blind, Joe.
You're going for your job.
All right. So I will go home and review that. Everybody else found it in the Dropbox. And then in December, we just have a singular meeting date, as it stands right now. And the thirteenth of December could be a board meeting. We don't have a work session in December. And that is also our Children and Taxation Act. At which point, if a member of the public wishes to address the board with regard to that issue, they are welcome to do so.
And also, I'm probably feeling that there'll be a couple of board members leaving, so if there's not too many, that's too full of holiday cheer and food by then, I might recommend that we draw it afterwards, if you can fit it into your schedule.
Get it arranged.
Yeah. Those boys will make it work. All right. Could I get a motion in a second to close the meeting for an update on teacher negotiations? And we'll just slide next door.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Before you do that, I have a bunch of stuff I have to do.